Should we start the meeting?
Yeah.
Shall we stop us? Forum?
Yes, I'll go ahead and take. Roll call. Chair Hecht.
Here.
I was chairing mine here, Commissioner Whedon.
Here.
Commissioner Texler is absent. Commissioner Ben Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Lou.
Yes.
And Commissioner Dalgue is absent. We have a quorum.
Okay. Is, is. Would you like me not dialing in or? Or it'll just pop up if he does?
He hasn't shown up yet, so.
Okay.
We have quorums out of it.
We have them anyway, so, okay. So I think the. Do we ask for any public? Comments that are not on the agenda? None?
Not tonight.
None from Gary?
All right, we can move on to.
So I guess we have a special presentation on permeable surfaces. Five to 10 minutes, it looks like. Want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hello everyone. My name is Anya. I'm in 11th grade and I go to the Nueva Schools in San Mateo. And I live right next to Los Altos, Los Altos Hills. And I'm very excited and honored to have the opportunity to speak to you all today. I have a slideshow. Can I go ahead and share?
Yes, just, I'm gonna admit Commissioner Dalgue, so the record show that he arrived a few minutes late.
For sure.
And then just let him join. And it's ready to share when you are.
Thank you. Awesome. So as I mentioned, my name is Anya and I'm very, very excited to have the opportunity to speak to you all today. So just a little bit of background, I created a group called EJ Grassroots and we are a team of six middle and high schoolers across the country and of course the Bay Area. And really what our goal is, is to create an equitable and sustainable community and that's through education and innovation as well as community partnerships. And one of our main key components in terms of innovation and and innovations and scientific innovation is in the category of conservation solutions where we focus on permeable surfaces. And so recently, honestly, today I had such a good time. It was a nice sunny day outside at school. It was, it was so nice. There was not a cloud in the sky. It was just a great day today. Unfortunately, I could not do the same for the last couple of weeks and there's a lot, lot of rain recently. And California has, of course, made the news last week and the week before about being so, having such intense rain and flooding. And really, we've been living through this and as you can see in the picture, right near my house, there are big, big pools of water that, that build up and it's also across my neighbors' homes. And really recently I read that a lot of this rainwater starts collecting and ends up picking up debris and toxins on while it's running off and, and this water ends up becoming toxin toxic and is very harmful to our health and just the environment in general. And, and also right now as these rains have been coming in, not only in California, but in the entire country, the government has been spending millions and millions on trying to tackle this problem right now. They've been sending a lot of emergency responders to flooding prone areas as well as getting sandbags to certain areas as well. And lots of people have really been harmed by all these rains. But Los Altos, which I love about Los Altos, says it's been so forward thinking and actually has started to prepare for these kind of problems years in advance. And that's where it comes to the Los Altos code that has been implemented and really the core tenants of that being stormwater management runoff prevention and permeable surfaces. And what I find really amazing, really fascinating is how the Los Altos code prioritized stormwater management and really wants to align construction and landscaping to align with prevent and minimizing stormwater runoff as well as runoff prevention, having drainage systems as well as permeable surfaces. And really what Los Altos does a great job of is promoting the, these goals on both a micro and macro scale. When it comes to the more micro scale of individual properties, especially with properties 2,500 square feet and more, they really recommend having like patios, walkways, et cetera, that are made of permeable surfaces and/or permeable unit pavers. And on a more macro level, the, the rules that now all our, our street solder paving policy as well as our swale solutions are now made of permeable surfaces rather than just like normal concrete. And that's really where the solution that my team and I came up with our permeable surfaces handbook kind of dovetails into Los Altos' goal of, you know, encouraging permeable surfaces in our city. And really what this permeable surfaces handbook entails is a descriptive yet simple background on what permeable surfaces are as well as a very step-by-step, simple installation guide for community members to use. And walks through all the steps of installation as well as where to buy materials, the cost of that, and as well as depending on which kind of surface or area you're trying to create using permeable surfaces, there's details on that as well. And the QR code up there is just in case someone needs a digital copy, you can scan the QR code for that as well. And, and what I really love about Los Altos on the actual, on the website itself, you guys do actually mention about, okay, stormwater, like preventing stormwater runoff is very important and permeable surfaces really do help with that. And I think one thing that really would be great to have more people really implement the solution is having an easier way for people to come across the solution and it's, it's not so foreign to them. And now that's where I really feel that the handbook that we've created kind of fits into that and helps people really understand what it means and is like a simple way for them to take action on what Los Altos really wants. And I just want to end this presentation with a lot, a lot of gratitude to a lot of people. Ms. Laura Texler, I know she's not here today, but she definitely helped me a lot. She's been hours with me. Actually, she invited me to her home and she talked me through what Los Altos' goals are and she gave me edits on the handbook and ideas, so I'm really, really grateful. Mr. Councilmember Pete Daly for all introductions and Los Altos is full of amazing forward-thinking people, so I'm very grateful for those introductions as well. And Mr. Gary Haddon, of course, a lot of amazing, amazing advice. I actually was also, I planted a tree with the 500 Tree Program with Greentown Los Altos. That's a lot of fun. And for all of your support and review. And actually, Ms. Ken Partiban, she actually works for Linkso. Linkso is actually a garden material store as well as she's on the Advisory Council for Sustainable San Mateo County. And she spent hours and hours editing and helping us really understand the science behind permeable surfaces, making sure this handbook is accurate and helpful for communities and community members. And so I'm really, truly, truly grateful to her as well. So yes, thank you all so much for your time and I'm really happy to entertain any questions you all would have. Thank you.
So, uh, thank you very much for the presentation and take, and thanks for taking the initiative to, to do this. We really appreciate it. So I guess my, my main question is, uh, what do you want to do with this? Handbook?
Yeah, for sure. So one of my main goals is really make it accessible for community members and I think those, the, again, the website did a great job of really kind of breaking this down that we really, our goal is to minimize stormwater prevention and here are some ways to do that. And when you guys write about the, and when we write about the permeable surfaces as a, as a solution, I think this handbook, if it's like linked on that website or there's like attachment that leads to this handbook, it could help people think a little bit more about, okay, this is exactly what I have to do. Instead of it being a little bit of a foreign concept and like, I don't really know where to start with this, so let me maybe just shy away from this because I don't really know what this is. So maybe if this is able to get in the hands of the community members through the website or being able to be linked like that, that would be an ideal goal, I feel.
Anybody else?
I have a question from the absolute after your presentation.
Yeah.
I was getting several options for layer four of, of backup which you have for you'd talk about the pros and cons of these options, the best that's possible.
Yeah. Well, so in terms of the really, the differentiating factor between these different materials is what they can be used for. And so with the permeable gravel filler, for example, the first option and the cheapest one, it can be used for patios and some walkways, but the thing is that really it's not fully and there's like certain levels and amounts of that need to use for like driveways, for example. And the, in terms of the different, for patios and walkways, the blue stuff, the bluestone lane, paver and the normal core grid, that really comes from user aesthetic and really what people want, want their house to look like. So it can really depend on what the user wants. But there's no specific protocol for someone to choose one of them rather than just the aesthetic itself.
And are there certain providers that people should look to or I guess developers they should know about in the area?
Yeah, so in the area there one, a common one that I've worked with is Linkso. They've, Linkso Garden Materials Store, they provide a lot, all of these materials as well as other garden stores, they might not provide the exact same solutions, but based on also the description I have, it kind of outlines what general materials can be used, so people can also follow up with that.
Yes. Thank you so much for putting the effort, putting together the work, the work that you know.
Thank you.
The team. You know, you guys are gonna lead us on into the future. A couple of questions, are there, as you, as you researched this, is, are there things that it's a very good guide of, you know, how to do it, what materials to put in? But are there things you've found that maybe people use that they shouldn't be using, so that any claims or anything that, you know, you should be aware of, you know, to come to use for this, that, for this reason, or anything that, you know, you feel that people could stay away from?
Yeah, I think in terms of the permeable surfaces listed here, these would be the ideal like starting point for that. I feel like in terms of what people should shy away from is really just non-permeable surfaces. I think just normal concrete that we see on the roads, you know, normal asphalt, not permeable. I think that's really what people shy away from, but I feel like in terms of specific permeable surfaces, as of now, there's no really one that we should shy away from, I feel.
And then I guess the second question. I don't know if related or not. Is there, um, you know, is there, uh, this specifically talks about gravel, things like that? But the other permeable surface is a living surface. Is there ways that those could be involved, you know, included in, you know, favors with some kind of not bad because that takes water and whatever else, but something else that's more.
Like as in materials not already listed here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or isn't, you know, specifically a, a living living surface, you know, like. People use sages, people use, you know.
Oh, those are really teeth, yeah, teeth ground covers.
Yeah.
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 Make it brown, sorry. Yeah, for sure. So native ground covers, I feel like is definitely a type of permeable surfaces. In terms of installation, yeah, that's definitely an option that community members can use. This was more about like in terms of landscaping, what people, in, instead of just like concrete, what people would use, that's definitely an option. And if you think that's something that people should also know about, that'd be great. I'll also include that in here as well. I can do more research on that and as that, add that as another chapter in there as well.
Other questions?
Well, we can definitely share this with our stormwater team and Public Works Department. And then see, see about other ways, maybe we can help you spread the word as well.
Thank you so much for your time, everybody. Thank you for the amazing questions too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next topic, we're meeting minutes. Are there any comments or additions? We'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll move through.
Second up.
All right, everyone in favor to approve the minutes? We had. All right, sounds good. The minutes, the minutes are approved.
The next topic is, uh, I think future meetings, we are discussing once again whether we can change the day and time of our regularly held meetings. So I think Tanya, why don't you just mention what you were thinking?
Yeah, so a lot of our meetings or a few of our meetings fall on Mondays, which happen to be city holidays. And so we were thinking that it would be, it, it may be easier to just change the day to like a Wednesday. So it's in the middle of the week and we don't have to deal with rescheduling any of the meetings. And then also, um, if it's, you know, if everyone can, if all the commissioners can to change the time to an earlier time. So we just wanted to put that out there, see what everyone's thoughts were on that and maybe come to a consensus.
And did, did you determine if this has to be unanimous or?
I think if, if one person can't make that schedule, then it, it's, it would probably be a no-go.
Okay, but we can also talk about that a little bit offline if everybody that's essentially of the commission, there's six out of the seven that are here and we'd obviously have to talk with Laura. I will at least put out there, I mean, Commissioner Texler was obviously, she originally thought she was gonna be off in a month from now. So we would need to just have that conversation with her, you know, directly anyways. Because that was her second kind of term. It was originally gonna sunset after March. So I'll just add on anecdotally is that when we were looking at this for coming up with meeting alternatives is we are going to, it's not gonna just be this year, it's gonna be every single year, we're gonna be met with holidays fall on Mondays, just that are kind of those not date specific, rather day-specific holidays. And what that then ends up somewhat unfortunately doing is because we're gonna try to move it or shift it for one month Monday, then the substitute month, it's gonna have the same type of almost kind of juggling act, which does, I know it seems simple for a one-off. It does end up becoming problematic for staff though, when we're really, we're trying to work several months ahead to get that. And then ultimately the, the day or the time of day, we're not asking for something drastic, but like starting at like a 6:00 PM, just because really it's a city hall kind of business day really stops at five, so really we're kind of left with like two hours of kind of downtime essentially where staff is already prepared for the meeting, uh, leading up to the day, um, you know, that we're having. The only other thing that I'll at least mention is that it does become somewhat cumbersome for, um, Tanya to essentially not, obviously, we're not gonna expect her to do things on the weekend. So Monday, it's essentially, if there's anything that needs to kind of like last minute get triaged for the commission, it has to happen all that day and instead of where we would have a Monday and Tuesday leading up to it, kind of like what we have with council, like today, we've been prepping for tomorrow, so we're not kind of mad rush, or if there is something, it's, we have time to actually triage it, so. Ultimately, it will be better functionality. One thing that I will also at least, um, talk about, just so that you all know, is the last time we brought this up, the topic was, we hadn't formally dismissed the, um, Design Review Commission that since has been dismissed and so that date or meeting day has now become available as an alternative.
Is that Wednesday at six?
Yep.
Great.
Are we, we're talking about all the meetings or the, or the meeting scheduled that was attached was really the the October and November, but you're talking about all the meetings?
The new, it would be the new regular meeting date and time.
So that we can actually have consistent meeting days of for the commission and as well as for staff.
And that was the third Wednesday.
Um, it could be the, it could be the first, second or third, I believe, yeah.
Well, from, from my personal standpoint, I think that makes sense. Wednesday is just as easy as Monday, I think. And I'd be okay moving it to six. Personally, I know some of you others may have conflicts, but, um, I, I, I would love to avoid the risk of losing two meetings a year because of holidays on Mondays. Uh, and we could just take that off the table by moving it to Wednesday, so I think that's a real good step, assuming we can all make it. It's my my personal situation.
I'd support the Wednesdays as well. I am not a hundred percent sure about the 6:00 PM type slot. I just need to check something. Kid pick up on certain days.
I can do, I can do the Wednesdays time if that's. I mean, I can do that.
I can do that too. Okay.
Hello?
Sure, it's like, good evening. I was trying to unmute. Uh, yes, I'm okay with Wednesdays at six, at 6:00 PM. That's fine with me.
Um, so I guess we, yeah, let's, uh, let's try to do that and see if Laura can accept it. And would we start next month? And, and I, I would try to keep it the first week or the first Wednesday, so it's at least somewhat in alignment with our current schedule, so we don't, uh, yeah, juggle the rules.
That's fine. And we can try to, um, talk to Laura offline to see if that's something that can, um, occur and then we'll can I reach back out to everybody, um, individually to let you all know?
And I'll, and we're, uh, takes a camp time.
Great.
Okay, sounds good.
So we'll be the second Wednesday of each month?
First.
The first. Okay.
And then to, we have to formalize it in the next meeting? And you had said, when would it start? I think we were just talking about either March or April, probably April if we.
So technically, it's kind of, um, perfect ripe for the conversation. Um, the, the commission will actually meet with the council on the 27th for your work plan. So we might, I would say maybe have one more month of it being, um, like on a Monday just because of the dates, so that we wouldn't have to wait for that meeting to affirm it. We would then just know and bring back on that, that first reoccurring, um, Monday.
Yeah, so it sounds like March will be Monday and then April would hopefully be Wednesday.
Yeah. Be able to kind of keep a clean break from there.
Yep. Next up are informational items. EB fair update.
Yeah, so that's gonna be Commissioner Van Reese. Right.
All right. Very excited towards the next iteration of Destination Electric. It'll be the second time we've done this there now. And go to the next. So March 23rd, I'm doing it earlier in the year this year than last year, it's still a Saturday. Uh, so a good time for community members to come by, uh, same, same location, 97 W Avenue at the community center. Um, we've adjusted the time a little bit to start a little bit later in the day. Three hour runtime in total, so you see there just the check-ins and such and the, they are one to fours now, the event window this year. Next slide. So we actually have a wider space this time because we're including a bike route for, uh, e-bike test drives. Um, so EV display and the booths is around the same space, but we have this, we're adding a whole space for bikes as well as a separate bu- bike, uh, display area in the top right there as well as, uh, some overflow booths. Should we need them on the right over there? The exact orientation of the cars might change, but otherwise this is the layout that we have. But um, vehicles confirmed or likely, so if they have an asterix, they're not confirmed, we can get one confirmation potentially today from Bruno. On one of the, the porch there. But otherwise, uh, that is the lineup. We have several new cars that we didn't have last time, like Cadillac Lyric. And, uh, Kia, so yeah, excited for the lineup we have here of cars. And then, uh, on the next slide, we have, uh, those e-bike test rides, those are provided by Red Power Bikes. So I have some alls there and then as well, we're hoping for some community members again to have e-bikes that people can talk about their firsthand experiences with those again. Next slide. And then, uh, these are not all confirmed, but it gives you a good flavor for what we have and I think in general, last time, uh, we had this event, we collectively all agreed that we wanted to see more home electrification presence at, at the, at the family forum. And so we have a few companies here that speak to that, such as, uh, Urbis doing, uh, HVAC and then, uh, Channing Street Copper is, uh, induction cooktop, cooktop stove combo as well as, uh, ES Solar. So, uh, very excited for the lineup that we have this year. And at the very bottom, we're hoping to have a ice cream vendor. We've talked to a couple different options, so. Last time, you know, it was during lunch, now we have a more afternoon, so seem more appropriate and, uh, expecting to have dairy-free options as well in that ice cream. Next slide. Um, basic promotions, basically the same as last time. Uh, notably, we've updated the poster to now reflect the e-bike portion as being a significant part of this event, so, uh, makes this really the sequel to last year's poster. Excellent. And then, uh, we just have these booth materials, they, this, you're still work from last year, so still have that. If we have anything else we want to add, you know, we can easily print that up, but we have the base material still. And then next slide just shows, uh, that we have those, uh, commission booth time slots to, to fill. And I'll be there the whole time, so. We'll have somebody no matter what. And that's everything on the updates.
Yeah, and if you want to volunteer, you can just email me and I can coordinate that.
Uh, great, thanks. Did you have some, Bruno?
No, I was nothing, sorry. No, I just, I can confirm that, um, we will be there with the car.
Great.
Excellent. I think it's great you're adding, uh, the induction cooktop, the solar and the HVAC company because I think, uh, when I was in the booth last year, it may have been a unique time, but I remember, I, I think 75% of my questions were non-EV. And, and, uh, so I mean, uh, it's probably too late this year, but moving forward, we may just want to call it EV and electric station there. If we can get more participants outside of the EV, because I think a lot of people are familiar with EVs, they're not as familiar with the electrification issues that they're facing. And if we can knock them both out in this fair, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could still, I guess, do that in our press release and stuff because we're still gonna put all that marketing out.
Can you change the, uh, to add electrification or to the, uh?
In the flyer?
Flyer. Or is that too?
Um, I think it's a little too late for the flyer, but we can.
Yeah, so may, maybe in the marketing and, and the outreach, you, you talk about electrification, um, as much as you can, because a, again, I think people love the cars, but they're also trying to learn about electrification, trying to figure that out.
Great idea.
Just a suggestion, uh, you may just reach out to the Bay Area Quality Management District, see if they're want to participate because they, they want to get the word out on appliances. So maybe they might want to have a booth. And the other suggestion that I have, I don't think it's ready. I think Silicon Valley Clean Energy is coming up with a demonstration mini house.
Oh, yeah.
Is that uh, it may not be ready in time for March. That may be another.
Is that like an electrified mini house they pull around?
Yeah.
All, yeah, awesome. That'd be good.
But it may not be ready.
Me and Tanya just met with them and that wasn't something that they mentioned, so I'm wondering if it's still, because they gave us kind of a pretty big overview of all their various things. So we can actually talk to, the next time we talk to them, we can ask them. But yeah, because they gave us kind of an exhaustive list of it.
Yeah, I think it may not be ready until later in the year, but you can just ask.
Yeah, they have, they have a lot of, uh, things going on we didn't even know about until they talked to them. They're, they're kind of keeping themselves busy even with some other ideas, so.
With the Bay Area Quality Management District, they may step up for just for people for a booth.
Sounds good. Thanks for the suggestions.
Anything else?
Just one comment slash question, uh, if we're serving any food or whatever we're doing, uh, and people are giving out handouts or or goodies, uh, we should make sure that, that everyone know that needs to be zero waste, uh, et cetera. So no, you know, individually packaged in plastic candy. We can do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Right?
Moving along to discussion items. The first of which is the work plan. Did you have document that you wanted to share for that, Tanya?
Um, I could share the other staff report. Just to look at the plan.
So I think as most of you recall, we discussed, uh, this the last time. We really winnowed down what we're gonna be focused on this year, and I think, uh, it came down to three or four items. I don't think we quite concluded on how we're gonna present those. Or how we're gonna think about those. We need to knock that down today. Um, and then as well, in addition to Tanya's, I think it was a one-pager. I have like a four-page presentation. I've started to prepare. I have like a four page presentation, I've started to prepare for the February twenty seventh meeting. Um, just draft form really, I need to finalize it after we get everybody's input today, uh, and then I, that's what we'll use to. Talk to the uh, council.
And just to add to that is, I think we left off in our last meeting with, we didn't have a consensus of, you know, did we want to focus on bu- building electrification, or did we want to focus on? Dark skies, um, and based on what everyone was saying, I kind of took that and put it into uh, this table, which is. This is not the way that it has to go, but I just wanted to kind of set us up for discussion, um, and. You know, like Chairhead said, like we should come to a consensus, and I also added this column for the commission role. Um, from what I thought the commission role should be, but I would love your input, what, what you all think it should be. And um, again, I took off the priority number, because we're going to be working on all these simultaneously, it didn't really make sense to me to have the priority number. Um, and then I added some of the others that we had on there, that could either. Fill in for when the project is completed, or. If we want to add it back in and take off one of these that, that are on there right now, we can do that. And then I also um, created this little diagram um, to reflect what's in the cap. Um, and I highlighted electric buildings, because that is, you know, the biggest uh, part in the energy. Uh, focus area, and um, just to, if we wanted to use this to steer the conversation and to see what we can focus on. Uh, but essentially, what I thought that the commission could do, if this is one of the goals that we have, is to help in programming and. Um, to support in the development ideation phases, and then also, you know, bringing it back to, to the commission to. Provide feedback and then assist with public outreach when we do come to a program.
Uh, any questions?
Last one. Go ahead. Commissioner Dougie.
Yeah, thank you, um. I think it's good, it reflects pretty much the discussion we had last time, um, the only question I, I have, and, and uh, just a suggestion, actually. Um. I don't know exactly where we're gonna end up with the dark skies, uh, ordinance, as well as the single-use plastics ordinance, in terms of timing, I'm guessing. And, you know. We'll see after the presentation, but we might be done, our work as a commission on these two items might be done by summer. Um, before the August recess, and I'm wondering if we should um. Highlight uh, at least one other backup, or um, or split it by half of two thousand twenty-four, first half, second half. Understanding that number two, which is existing building in electrification, will take us the whole year and maybe part of next year. But number one and number three, as I said, might not take us the whole year, and therefore, we need to have something else for the second half of two thousand twenty-four. Part of the list you have afterwards.
I, I think, uh, I think that's a good point, uh, on my document, I had also, I, it was pretty similar to yours, actually, yeah, if you want to pull up mine. I included urban forest uh, master plan as well, as something we would work on in parallel. As kind of the lower, again, I just kind of put it in priority order, I think, and, and so that was the last priority, understanding that that's. Uh. They will pick up when we have time. Um, but in terms of dark sky, roughly, I think it is a midsummer type deliverable, that's my goal, is to get. A concise set of recommendations to the city council by midsummer, I think that's doable, I mean, we don't have it quite sketched out yet, but I, I think that's doable, you can go to. Um, the fourth.
Of course, fine.
Yeah. And so this is kind of, again, pretty similar to how Tanya set it up. Uh, and so the only thing I have on here differently actually is the urban forum, uh, urban forest master plan. Uh, because we already have an assignment for that, we have. I believe, right, we have a subcommittee already established, is that right?
So my understanding is that we disbanded all the twenty, so we'd have to reestablish.
All these have to be reestablished.
Yeah, I think you, you may want to put a subcommittee to be established or whatever, but I think it's an open.
So it sounds like always except dark city, but dark sky is.
The dark sky is accepted, because we voted on it, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we should start calling them ad hoc committee, just to.
Got it, yeah.
What everyone's calling it, but yeah, we have, if we would have to um.
Reassign these. And can we do that this meeting, or do we have to wait till next meeting?
Well, we would have to have a specific goal for each ad hoc committee. And a specific timeframe in order to create it, so it can't just be the urban forest master plan.
Got it.
If I recall previously, it was like, and by the end of year, there has to be something, right, it's not even just.
Yes, or sooner.
Or sooner.
Yeah. But also, with the urban forest master plan, why I didn't add it is because it's contingent on funding unless we're going to be budgeting in the budget season for. For um, a consultant, uh, so it's right now, it's ma- mainly based on if we can get a grant. For it.
Right, and, and so.
Can, can, just, well, before we move on, but. Does that imply, though, that we can't be, the, the environmental commission can't be doing some research or benchmarking in the meantime for that? Um, or would you say it's dependent on us getting funding for uh?
Like, what would be the research? Because the way I, that we would do an urban forest master plan is to start out with a consultant. So that they would do a majority of that research and. Meetings with staff and data gathering, and we would need a new tree inventory, and um.
A lot of it's like the geospatial kind of analysis component that really, that's. I mean, that's, that's the main potatoes of what we kind of need, what I was gonna kind of just quickly jump in on in regards to um. The urban forests, so I mean. We're gonna obviously get somewhat of council direction by the end of this month, and, you know, that was kind of um, loosely discussed um, about, you know, the importance of an urban forest master plan, so I think it's. Kind of on the, the, the precipice of probably getting, you know, kind of early direction that, that's gonna be. You know, again, hey, like we're talking about is, by summer, we're talking about, you know, working on, you know, and getting the dark skies done, so. We're kind of talking about the perfect stages of some stuff, so, yeah, I mean, if you guys are familiarizing yourself with it, it's just, I guess, not having the expectation that there's going to be deliverables, obviously, until we have. The funding, um, which I think is kind of, you know, potentially um, at the forefront. What I do want to do somewhat, um, based on like how Tanya structured it, is that's obviously kind of other potential work plan projects for when things kind of come up and emerge. But like, so number two about like the emergency management and resilience planning component of that, from what's in the staff report, so. The city is um, going to authorize uh, me to execute an agreement with Michael Baker for our safety element um, tomorrow night. Um, and so that is going to be a factor of what a safety element is, is about the emergency um, management and resilience planning, that's what a safety element of the general plan does. Um, so that's getting, and it's a statutory requirement for us to do that, so. There are more than just kind of like the three priorities that we're talking about in the work plan, that are going to be some of these. Kind of, as they kind of come up, we will be bringing them back to the commission, but again, like those two things are going to rely heavily on some techni- technical um, kind of. Guidance and, you know, advances with an outside consultant, so we're gonna do it, we're, I mean, we kind of have to, to be quite honest, um, so it's just. I don't know necessarily until we get some of this stuff that we have to get from a consultant, what the commission would um, you know, truly have. Um, until we get some of that, so that's why we could focus on some of the, the other three kind of components at the front end of this work plan.
So I, I, I. Um, this clarification, just uh, so emergency management, resilience planning, would that be something that we would take um, as a goal potentially, because of what you're doing with the safety plan?
So it's something that would be, so it's going to touch multiple different components um, of kind of the city organization in general, so it's something that we would. Um, have the commission kind of look at the components of the emergency management and resilience planning as it relates to kind of the clap, cap, the cap implementation. Um, as well as, you know, kind of the environmental and sustainability component, so there's going to be components of it that aren't necessarily. The E C, but then there will be components that really are kind of more in the wheelhouse of the environmental commission.
So, so, yeah, go ahead.
What I do is a group called Los Altos Resilience, they've been giving out webinars. Uh, providing materials uh, for all the residents in the city, so. Are you, you, you know what they're doing, right? They actually, I think they planned like the next six months, they have various different things, so. How does that, so you don't that, you don't consider that that is a, a, a whole C T Y kind of effort? They're getting people prepared.
So that's the actual more like community engagement, which is fantastic, but the, yeah, the safety element itself is um, it's a legal component of our city's general plan, it's one of seven. So it's kind of just like the housing element, we're actually legally obligated to now update the safety element, because we updated the housing element. So now it's, it's something that we're gonna do regardless of if we want it to or not, because of it.
Okay, alright, so that's, alright, so we really have that, that community engagement.
Yeah, which is.
They're doing a very good job.
Yeah.
I think, I, I win one, recently.
Good. Um, so, so are you suggesting, Nick, we, we add resilience onto the work plan, is it?
No, I just, I want to kind of make sure that you guys know is that even though these are kind of your, you know, your kind of main takeaways of what we look at when it's on the table, is the, kind of like the footnotes of what's in the staff report, are. They are going to be things that are kind of going, because these are priorities that are being set forth truly by the commission, but there's going to be components that we do bring to you guys throughout this year.
Down two slides, I was trying to capture that element, like saying, hey, there, there's a larger cap and stuff being done, but it's not being done by us, it's being done by. Staff, so I, I tried to capture some of that in this uh, page right here.
Yeah, I hadn't seen yours.
Um, yeah, yeah, no, I, I said it at the last minute, uh, and so I, you'll see, I think resilience steps are down here, and I would just put, well, whatever the detail is, you just, just very summary level, it's being worked on by staff, right, so. Even though these aren't things we are working on, we all, everybody agrees is our party, and to some extent, they're being worked on. Uh, but they're not just not, there's no ad hoc subcommittee working on, we're not going to talk about it every meeting, it's just being done in the background. Uh, so that's why I tried, that's what I tried to do with this page.
Um, and this is something you want to let council know, or is?
I would think so, because I think, you know, if, if I'm council, I might say, what, what's, what's, uh, I can imagine they might ask, what's, what's going on with the other items in the cap? Uh, and, and our response is, well, these, these are being worked on. Uh, city staff is managing, or maybe they're not being worked on, maybe it's just a gap, and we all recognize it's a gap, or it's just not a priority right now. Um. So, that's what I was trying to capture this slide, is like, we, we've got three or four items we're working on, here's the other. Multiple items in the cap that are still priorities and getting done. Or maybe they're not getting done in that's life, right, uh?
Yeah, I mean, the way that I kind of just see you guys now look at it, is like from the, from the slide three to then this one, is I kind of look at, even though it's not passive, it's like, I look at. These are our main three that are the, the active, and these are the passive ones that are kind of the ongoing, because if you were to look at the agenda for tomorrow night, um, for the commissions that are going there. A lot of their um, programs or action items are kind of, oh, they're really, they're ongoing, so like the historic commission, for example, like the historic designation plaque program. It doesn't happen until you have someone that, you know, goes for certification or determination of the designation of that um, house. Um, so I mean, it's kind of, yeah, it's, it's a part of it, but it's only going to happen when someone goes to seek that type of um, you know. Component of the process, so um, I mean, it's, it. It's kind of like we're blending the two, so it, it doesn't really matter, it's just going to be more focused to have the, hey, these are what are active ones that we're really putting a lot of energy, time, and resource to.
So, if I may, um. Go back to your uh, thing with the thing that are, uh, yes, uh, the top three that. Uh, we kind of agreed upon, and then what else might come up? The way I see it, or the way I would do it is that, yes, uh, these are the three things that we agree upon as, as a commission. Um, and then these are other things that we would like to work on, you know, as and when time comes in. And maybe ask council for guidance, if they like us to, you know, prioritize one or the other. And give us guidance on, okay, this makes sense for you to do in this capacity, or, you know, that, that's the way I would kind of ask. Um, it's an opportunity to ask council uh, for guidance. And, you know, if they tell us, hey, you know, this seems important, or, you know, we're already working on this, or. Whatever comes out of it, so I would kind of maybe table those uh, the other three things as, as potential. Um, and why, and what we potentially do uh, under each thing. Uh, if, if we have a chance to discuss and align on, on that, and then see what council says. Uh, Commissioner Dougie.
Yeah, I, I think uh, I was looking at your slide number five, which has all the other goals, I think there is one in there, which is existing building electrification, which you have in slide three and five. So I, I would delete that from slide five, because it's under goal number two, um. And then, um. I would agree that the urban forest master plan, until we have a budget, I'm not sure how much we can do. Especially if we, staff knows exactly what they will ask um, the consultants to be done. Um, if the request for proposal is pretty much already done, or they have it in mind, or they want to share it with us, I mean, other than that, I'm not sure what else we can do until we have a budget. Um, so I would not necessarily put it in our goals, what I would do, though, I would suggest to do is, I think, to put emergency management and resilience planning. In the goals for us for this year, maybe for the second half of the year, and it's part, as part of the work that's going to be done with regards to the safety plan. Um, because. I, you know, I, I, I think uh, i- it's an important goal of the cap, but it's also something, we're not, we're not really looking very much at adaptation this year, and I think. I really believe that we should put something around adaptation in the work plan.
Well, another thing to maybe, way to look at it, maybe, you know, like if we go back to the cap, we had. These uh, guidelines of, these are, you know, kind of goals that we want, that we hope to. Uh. To achieve by twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Um, maybe we skim through that and see what did we think when the cap was being drafted. Um, that we really needed to get done in the near short-term horizon, if there's anything. Um, that um, we listed there that we haven't made any progress on, maybe we should bring it up and just kind of revise. You know, bring it in front of the council and say, these are the things that, you know, the cap thought that at that time made sense to get done by this time. How, you know, what do we think, does it still make sense to have that, and then what does help provide us on? What we could do to make it happen, if we think it needs to happen to, to, you know, get our goals by twenty thirty-five?
I think to add to that, if, if that's something you wanted to do as well in the presentation, you can, you can list the, the cap goals that have been met already, or achieved. Just to remind people of where we stand, I think it's a good way of. Saying, you know, we, we're making progress, this is what we've done, and then this is what we should, the plan was saying we should be done by to the end of two thousand twenty-five, so. Um, that's another potential option or suggestion for the presentation.
Um, okay, any other comments?
Uh, is it a fair assumption to say that if someone is not on the work plan, then we should make requests for certain people to speak or try to get, you know, Q and A forum during the commission meetings on that topic?
I, I, I would uh, discourage kind of random uh, acts of information, just out of, for, for time constraints. Uh, if there's a very specific reason, uh, we're going to call somebody, it turns out, we just need to know why.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's, and it should tie to something we're working on, or will be working on shortly, I would argue.
Yeah, so, I bring this up because of the urban forest topic, I just, I'm, I want to, I want to discount the potential for community building that we can do through our forums, so. If we don't have items in the future for the year, we know that's there, then I'll be encouraged to find, you know, what are those topics that we can talk about here? To really get that ball rolling in a way that isn't just financial, so. But that's why I'm just thinking, like, it is nice to have a couple more items on there, so that we have. That flexibility to keep that ball rolling.
Yeah, I, I see, yeah, fair enough, yeah, good point.
Um, my comment was, uh, going back, Tanya, to your, your, this.
This, this, the uh document that was put in, attached to the agenda. I have one comment on that. I think that that document is fairly well aligned with things that are that you presented. Uh, Tom, and so I I don't think that there's, it's just how you present it. Yeah, council, I think that's, that's, I think there's alignment there, except for one thing, and that's, that's. Uh, on the slide that you had on the first page, the the second item, we have existing building electrification. Um, I would, I would say uh that. Not, not this one, your, your deck that was.
Oh, yeah, I have that as number two.
Yeah, it's it's number two on your item, and that I I would suggest that should be. We haven't defined the specific paths, but I think it should be more general, it should be building electrification. Because uh it could be related to new or existing buildings, because I think one of the things that came out of a council. Uh, discussion here, one of the last meetings was to investigate, is there something that we can be doing on uh? Uh, building, new building ordinances in light of the Berkeley. Uh, uh, decision that that made it not, may not be presentable in the fashion it is, and I think council will say. Well, is there some other way or something else that we can do? So I would say that your item number two should be really read. Uh, uh, building electrification and then say, uh, develop programs to support. Electrification of new or our new and existing buildings, and then. When the plan comes up, the the specific item that you wanna work on, it's covered by both that, be it in a new building or an existing building.
I can make that update.
But I I I think that all's really, I think the rules you're trying to do is, is you're talking now about format. And I assume that the presentation to city council is gonna be on our accomplishments. And then on what our top priorities uh are, and then. The items that are are uh other work planned projects that may arise. So.
I I think that's right. I think we've kind of solidified, we'll drop the urban uh force management plan until we have. Uh, consultant dollars, consultant or active consultant.
If I may on that one, there may be, as as Carl is saying, certain things that may come up. Uh, in terms of community outreach engagement, as well as maybe low dollar amount things that can be done ahead of. Having a consultant come on full time, that may come up. There were some things that, you know, previously at the subcommittee had identified. Uh, as you know, low expenditure information that we can get that would inform our urgent or whatever it is that. So. If we, if we keep that as a potential item, and if we get guidance from council that this is potentially. Uh, worthwhile looking at, that we could kind of bring back, you know, just just very simple. Actions that does, don't require, you know, a hundred K to a hundred K budget, but you know, something that we could do ahead of. That would help and also guide our our fee and how we select uh, uh, the city selects uh. Consultant.
Yeah, if I could just, I think if you wanna add a slide that just says. Like how I had it in the staff report, this is other potential work plan projects and explain it as such. But I think the goal also of today and in general for this work plan is the reason we're, we're um. Modifying it to only have three is because we really wanna focus on these three, and we really wanna work on these three instead of. Constantly being like, okay, we have this and we have that, and and. Like I said, if we do get a grant, or if we do get the funds, that will come back to the, if the grant has a timeline, that's gonna. You know, proceed whatever's going on, depend, you know, it might not be able to work that way. We might have to do it all at the same time, depending on where we're at in a, in a program development. Um, phase. So I think what I also wanted to know from today is, is for the existing building electrification. What is it that we want that to look like? You know.
That that is, that that is still a question, but I think the way I think about it is. Um, we form an ad hoc subcommittee. Uh, and given the current situation, given uh the legal issues and everything else, uh, that ad hoc subcommittee comes up with. Here's what we think we can do between a commission and staff. Uh, but I can't come up with things off the top of my head, but to me, it simply is, there's two to three people on a subcommittee. They get together, think about it, put together a a very. Uh, simple plan of here's what we can do on bill, building electrification, given our limitations right now.
And the city, just so you guys know, the city attorney and myself have both attended some um executive level uh. Only um webinars that have been hosted by some of the people that are kind of trying to research. Um, everything in light of the Ninth Circuit's decision. Um, but there hasn't really been a very strong opinion that any firm is willing to kind of put out for um. The affected uh district, so it's um, it's an interesting kind of issue, because we also have to remember is it puts a. Pause on Ninth Circuit area of the country and not the rest. So there's other areas of the country that if they had the same exact code. Um, that they had approved previously, like Berkeley, they're still able to enforce it because of that decision right now. So it's um, it's an interesting kind of uh minutia of everything, but so. We both are actively looking at um certain components, because they kind of keep on bringing up more. Um, discussions and kind of brainstorming sessions essentially of how to kind of do that. The only thing, though, now I'm gonna segue into it is like, so we're already in the meeting of number two for the year. We don't meet in July, we don't meet in December, we have eight meetings left, so I know three items might seem like a slim pickings, but they're also not. Likes truly slim items, it's gonna take some, you know, pushes to get some of these through, so. Just keep that in mind too, is that it it's really gonna have us have a impactful, you know, hey, these three bigger things got done in twenty-four. Um, I think that, I know that's what everyone's kind of really wanting to see some, you know, kind of fundamental deliverables this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna add to what you're saying. This is some examples that I have come up with already that we're gonna need also funding and budgeting for, so. If we're gonna spend the rest of this year coming up with programming, we're, we would need to um. Either bring this to council and ask for funding, which it's too late to do that this year, then we we need, we need to um. Get grants to be able to, a lot of these programs, like, I mean, I was looking at Mountain View and they have a, they had a um. Their advisory committee come up with it, with suggestions, and they did a decarbonization roadmap, they. They had baseline study, all this was done through um consultants. So there, I think there's some things that we can do through marketing, through our website. Um, promoting incentives, uh, S V C's incentives and other incentives, but as far as, you know, you know. Uh, like Mountain View has their energy upgrade program, which is, all of this is not based on the code. So, and all of this is gonna take funding or technical assistance or um, something like that. So I think we need to come up with, maybe that subcommittee is coming up with the programs and and seeing how we can get funding for it. So that's, this is just some of the ideas that I had in.
No, no, I I think, I think that's what I had in mind is that, that's what the subcommittee would be doing, is coming up with this laundry list of things and. Uh, what we can do at low cost or with uh minimal cost that that we can get budget for at some time, uh. Makes sense? Yeah, so so I just wanna be clear, we're gonna leave here, though, those are the three priorities. Only two will have assigned, only one will have an assigned ad hoc subcommittee at this point, and then. We will assign ad hoc subcommittees as soon as we get approval from the city council, so the following meeting that would be on the agenda, right? To staff those up, and then we'll put timing on them and and start working.
So we'll leave these three.
Yes, those are the three.
Well, it seemed to recall that we had a one hour, one hour committee at a time.
No, we can't just have, oh, yeah, that's what another thing I was gonna say is we can't have repeating. Um, commissioners on a committee, so I think. With the three, um. There's only one, two, three, four, five, six, there's already. Um. You can only have three. Three sub, three ad hoc committees.
Yeah, there can't be, I I have looked at the handbook right now, there can't be any duplicative people.
Sure.
Um.
The three as much as we could do it.
Three, two people and then two, three people committees.
Yeah, yeah, no majority, and then, yeah, so, and then one year.
Hey, what if they're one person subcommittee, something.
Yeah.
So right now, two people already on one subcommittee, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? So so in order to close on that, I will send a deck out to. Vice Chair and Tanya, and we'll solidify that deck, and that'll be the, what we present to the commission.
And do we wanna talk about logistics real quick of?
Sure.
Who's attending and, cause it's, I think only thirty minutes per. Commission, so did, do you all have a plan and was it just one of you, two of you?
I assumed, you know, I I assumed uh I and vice chair would present. And we'll figure out how to divvy those up, um, and then whoever wants to attend can attend.
I think in the past, most commissioners attended.
I have not.
Yeah, the, I mean, so i- it's been obviously, if not last year, didn't have it for sure, and so um, the only thing that, you know. The commission has kind of now, you know, mutually agreed upon, you know, what the plan is to kind of put forward to the council, but. So there's kind of like one unimined now with that, but then now there's gonna be five. That are gonna have potential different questions, you know, back and forth of the, of the ping pong potentially, so I, that's. My only suggestion is, is people can attend for sure to show the support, it's just. I would not recommend more than two to be speaking to the council, cause your thing gonna be at a volley and then.
No, no, I think for efficiency and messaging, it's important only to our uh.
Anyone, anyone can attend and then be designate one or two.
Yeah.
I'm only bringing up, there's a commission that wants, everyone wants to have a component of the discussion, and it's like, okay, that's gonna be a very fast thirty minutes.
Okay, so two of you.
Yeah, I mean, if everybody's agreement, just two of us will present and answer questions, uh, unless there's something extraordinary.
For, for now, are you good or?
Yeah, no, I was actually asking questions about logistics, how you wanted to handle the meeting. Participation and so on, so I think that's just addressed.
In the, in the past. Commissioners of, that can't make it, make it, that it's, you get to hear firsthand then from, from the council as to their viewpoints. And sometimes the council even may direct a question to someone, yeah.
Yeah, so everybody should be encouraged to attend.
So is tomorrow just meeting environmental commission or there are other commission?
No, environmental twenty-seven, yeah, not tomorrow, yeah, the tomorrow is uh.
Yes.
The park uh historic planning and. Someone else, I can't remember. There's four, so it's four and four.
Thank you.
Right. Next discussion item is single use plastics update.
Yeah.
Are you presenting?
Yes. Welcome to the present day. So just to kind of recap on. Um, kind of what we talked about last time is, we already have current policies for single use. Um, polystyrene and single use foodware upon request, and this would just be building off of um, all of these. Uh, current policies and um, compliance would be one year post adoption. And there would be few, few exemptions, um, again, that's just recapping, but what I really wanted to get in today was some of the policy. And uh, a reminder of what the cap is asking for. Is to adopt a new ordinance to eliminate non-essential single use plastics and prioritize reusable foodware and utensils. And ensure all new single use foodware and utensils are compostable per guideline from the franchise waste hauler slash, it should say in there. The uh landfill or compost facility. Um, and so I've been doing a lot of research, meeting with a lot of different cities. Um, and just seeing, you know, their processes and what they currently have, some of the challenges that they're going through. And um, before I jump into kind of that, that stuff. I just wanted to, basically, this is what it would look like if it was um, based on what the cap is asking for. So we would have, we wanna look at this in kind of two parts, the to-go requirements, and so based on the cap and based on. Our waste hauler, we would at, we would ask for, or we would require fiber-based foodware. Um, for to-go and aluminum foil would be okay as well. Um, no compostable plastic, because that cannot be, uh, that cannot decompose at. The compost facility, which is Newby Island, which is a landfill, and then they have the compost facility on the side. Um, and then no plastic foodware. Um, so that is, you know, the high level of what the to-go requirements would be. And then to kind of jump into some of the benefits and the challenges of this, uh, based on what, you know. I've talked to other cities about is, and then the obvious things are, there's a plastic reduction, landfill diversion, which directly correlates to their cap. There's more demand for comp, if we have more businesses using compostable products, it creates a demand. Potentially reducing the cost of the compostable products. And then it can also push the hauler and the composters to adapt their facilities to take in such material. Um, right now, most jurisdictions um, take their food scraps. Um, to different, to various compost facilities, and they all don't have the same um, logistics. And so that's why we'll see a huge variation in um, some of the data later on. But, and then some of the challenges, um, that I think we need to talk about openly are. That certain compostable products are not accepted at the compost facility, and that could create a challenge. Um, when, for businesses when ordering the items and the products, it could create a challenge. For the waste stream and contamination, and. Um, so it's, you know, there's different parts of this, it's, you know, the business buying the product. The consumer throwing it away in the right place, the hauler taking it to, you know, the landfill with the right. Um, load, and then at the facility that it actually gets to the compost pile. So just, there's a lot of factors that go in here that could affect the item actually getting composted. Um, and if it doesn't, we're not actually reducing our G H G emissions, um, cause it just ends up going to the landfill. Um, which is, you know, the next one, no green greenhouse gas reduction benefits if not composted correctly, and then it requires this. Um, would require expansive education, technical assistance to business community to switch. Um, what they're ordering in their inventory. So the second part, the the second part is the dining requirements, um, and that would be requiring. Any food establishment to uh use reusables, um, if anyone is dining on the property. And so these are some of the items that they can have, it can be plastic, it could be um. Metal, it could be ceramic, it just has to be reusable, and um. Both of these requirements, the to-go and the dine-in are best case scenario. And some of the benefits and challenges are, there's a huge savings after the payback period, which can be anywhere from a few. Days to less than a month, and there's been extensive case studies on this. Um, and then the waste reduction landfill diversion challenges is the initial investment, the businesses would need to purchase the reusables. Um, potentially needing a dishwasher, either a person or a machine. And then this also requires expand, um, expansive education campaign and technical assistance to. Kind of move the businesses into, into compliance and have a successful ordinance. So if we're looking at some of the cities and what they're implementing, um, you can see in this column here. That most of the jurisdictions that have a foodware ordinance. Um, only seven of them, I think these are seven yeses, are actually doing a dine-in requirement. And then um. Must be fiber-based compostable, which is what we were talking about earlier for to-go. Most of them have yes, there are a few no, and the reason, for example, for with Truckee, why they do no is because. Their landfill doesn't accept most of the compostable products, even the P L A lined ones. So they just felt like it wasn't necessary for them to have a requirement on to-go, and just to focus their efforts on the dine-in. Um, most of them are P L A lined, uh, or mostly all, yeah, allow P L A lined. The same explanation for the ones that don't allow it, I'm not sure why Berkeley allows it on theirs, um, but. Um, all of these must be approved by third party, must be uh P F A S free, where we would be saying. Where we would be saying the same thing for our ordinance. And then there's some data on, um, fee for disposal. And as you can see, most people do not charge for disposable cups or takeout containers. Um, Truckee does. Um, and I was actually there a few weeks ago and I did have to, I did, you know, I was at a grocery store, got a soup, had to pay for the cup. Um, and, you know, it's, it's interesting. I'm not sure what the impact would be. Um, and there would have to be a lot of signage saying, please bring your own cup or something. Um, but you know, they're a unique situation because they're a tourist destination. So based on all of this, and a lot of this hasn't changed on what we've been talking about previously. Some of the questions I have for the commission is, do we want to implement to-go? Do we want to focus on to-go requirements only, dine-in requirements only? Um, dine-in, uh, to-go requirements first, then dine-in, vice versa. Um, based on this data and based on the fact that compostables aren't where they should be yet. I would like the commission to weigh on and how we want to go forward with the requirements of this ordinance. Any questions, of course?
I think the phrase approach is good because it matters a lot is the to-go. I think most of the dining, they're all reusable, first my experience, you know, city, right? But to-go is the key. It produce a lot of these kind of, uh, issues, you know, so. We can do a facing approach. You just implement for the to-go one first. It looks like most of the places where you have just quoted, they all have adopted, maybe with some exception here and there.
Very nervous about how I'm gonna acquire my soup now. You made me very nervous.
Bruno's got a question?
Oh, yeah.
Great table, that, Tanya.
Yeah, so, um, my question, I do, I actually great presentation. It's really a good summary of, uh, you know, where we stand and what potentially we could do. Um, regarding the dining, how many of the restaurants and, uh, food providers and beverage providers are using single-use plastic foodware, um, in the, for the dining in Los Santos right now? Because I'm guessing it's not that big of a number. Am I wrong?
That would require, I think, door-to-door, um, visits. I think there, they did some studies a few years ago when, when, um, uh, this ordinance was initially, um, brought to the table. Um, but I, I, I don't think we can rely on that data anymore. And they had, um, I think they had hired a consultant to go door-to-door and get that information.
I, I can tell you anecdotally from some of the stuff that we've seen, just from like code enforcement and also like the public works, um, street maintenance crews is there definitely is still a good number though of, um, to-go where that probably isn't really necessary. I mean, without us having someone watch exactly where the user is taking it from and where they're going to, are they really taking it, you know, totally down the opposite side of the street and down to kind of like the, you know, Veterans Plaza, you know, obviously they're not gonna take dine-in stuff with them, um, versus just something that's right in front of, you know, in the parklet or on the sidewalk. Um, we'd obviously have to kind of do some like, you know, uh, kind of user and kind of, um, you know, kind of the, the community kind of habits so much, um, you know, for that type of, uh, but we do have a couple that I know for sure produce a lot of to-go waste that is going from the counter to the sidewalk bench. And, I mean, the, we just know just by watching the waste, um, cycle of how some of the immediate, um, trash, uh, bins are getting filled up exponentially quick. So it's definitely somewhat of an issue still.
Yeah, I mean, the to-go is, is, is the big issue here, but I'm, I'm just wondering whether we should do both at the same time. If the dining part is actually pretty much a done deal in Los Santos. I mean, I mean, the, the issue about the dining, you know, you see the cost, the upfront cost, but it's mostly the dishwasher also having someone to wash the dishes or having a dishwasher. Um, and I think would be useful to have that kind of information because if it's a small fraction of the Los Santos providers, I think might make sense to move forward with that as well, in addition to the to-go requirements. Uh, and maybe, you know, put in the exit, give, give them some more time to acquire the equipment or you know, just a little bit more than a year, maybe in that case. I, I just don't know. I'm just thinking that it's gonna be very hard to do again, something sequentially. I, I'd rather do it, you know, together, just to the to-go requirements as well as dining requirements at the same time with the same ordinance would be my preference, uh, I think. But that's just, that's just me.
Well, so just to the commission notes, kind of just to touch on what Bruno just mentioned is so, um, in order to be a food establishment in Santa Clara County and really in the state of California, you have to have the, um, the washing facilities. Now, whether or not it's in a mechanicalized, um, you know, dishwasher, or whether or not it's the, the three separate, you know, you rinse, you wash, you sanitize. It, I mean, it's illegal, there will not be a single restaurant that can make that argument because they would not be able to be open as an establishment with the, um, a health permit. So just so that we know that, at least at first value, that's just a component. It's just how they, how they physically do it potentially is really more so the psychology of kind of working with the vendors.
Yeah, I, I, I think I kind of agree, agree with Bruno. It's better to get them both knocked out at once. Uh, and I think the dine-in is at least, and in my mind, is not a, as big a lift as the takeout. But maybe in order to make it a little easier, you do the takeout is gotta be, you've got to comply within a year and the dine-in you comply within two years. So you give them a longer timeframe for the dine-in and make it easier. If there is some expense upfront, they have to invest.
Nick, you were saying that to be a dine-in facility or just to be a food service facility?
A food service facility, um, in the county, as well as the state, you have to have the, the cleaning facilities. Um, I mean, even if you're, believe it or not, a bar, you can't even be a bar without having literally a thir- a separate three, um, sink, um, behind the bar. It's, it's impossible, at least to be legally operating, or the places we probably want to go to.
Okay, because I'm, I'm hoping.
I think if, if that's the case, that removes one of the big challenges with this implementation.
I think so.
Uh, then you left with the upfront cost of buying the, uh,
Yeah.
the reusable foodware. So I, I think, I think it's, it's very doable.
It's just additional labor if you have to have someone washing the dishes, or if you need a dishwasher, those tend to be a lot more expensive than the residential ones. So giving them more time to comply may, is I think a good, a good option. Definitely we should, I, I would second that we should do it all together. I mean, it seems like a no-brainer that dine-in should not at least be throwing plastic in the trash.
And I think, Tanya, your slide that you had highlighting what the to-go requirements would look like, I think it's, it's exactly, uh, right on point. Um, you know, this basically what we want to do, um.
The question, just to be sure, so are, uh, uh, compost facility will take the PLA lined cups? Or is that, do we not know that yet?
They, it's, it's a mixed information. And that's, yeah. There's a lot of mixed information on that, that we're getting from the hauler, from the compost facility, from other cities. It's very unclear. Wish I had a better answer.
Well, that's, that's, that's one thing. And when I was doing, working some on this a couple of years ago, there's other things that are nuances like the lids and other things that, that fall into this area where, you know, there isn't an acceptable alternative. There, there isn't a reasonable alternative for it. But if, um, and, and I know that also we're looking at possibility where the facility that doesn't have the, the cleaning, but evidently they shouldn't be operating then, but the, uh, services that do the off-site sanitation.
Yeah, I, I recall seeing that, um.
But, uh, that, to me, that's, I, I think if you can go, if they're supposed to have the facilities, then, then the cleaning onsite is obviously the way because the research that did into the, an off-site sanitation was very difficult.
I think, yeah, that's what it looked like the decision was, would it would just be onsite, based on the ordinance from last time.
But there would, there's, there's gotta be some exceptions, but I, I believe, you know, I agree with going with the, the primary focus on the takeout, but also including the dine-in, maybe it's a phase, phase in type approach, you know, that do it all in one ordinance or else you're going to be doing the education twice. Uh, you know, on two separate ordinances rather than just one ordinance with a phase in.
And then maybe with the, with the takeout, uh, even there, we could have a phase in of, of our phases of what's allowed up till when, things that don't have a solution make. We still say that when a solution comes in place, um, or two years, whatever is sooner or later, whatever, however that, that logistics work out of that. We could include that, so example cups, yes, uh, the, the covers for the cups.
There are covers. It's just, I, so I think, I mean, there, there are businesses currently in the city that have the to-go cups that have both the fiber wear and the lids and the, the bottoms. But those are, those are PLA line, so the soup cups. Um, but what I'm hearing is that we want to phase in maybe lids, like, and cup, so soup lids and cup lids, so that, the, the thing is, is this is exactly what I wanted feedback on is, is the more nuanced the ordinances, the harder it's going to be to comply with. And when, um, I was talking to some of the other cities, some people, some of the businesses themselves were just like, well, if we're gonna do fiber wear in the bottom, we're gonna do it on the top too. But, yeah, I mean, we could, I, I guess that's what I was going back and forth on is how new ones do we want to make it? You know, how many?
I think there are fiber-based lids that we, that can be used. There is no need to make an exception for that.
Yeah, if there is a good solution that's not, you know, exorbitant, that, um, we can educate, uh, people on that's.
How much more expensive this are? The recyclable material. Does the restaurant, um, charge or take-all material? Container? I mean, does it, does it add up so that they would charge a small fee?
So I can tell you.
What are most of the city had done?
Well, I can tell you anecdotally from someone that was nearly married to a restaurant owner. Um, the actual like, like to-go, like what we would take food home in, that's not really, there's not much of a delta. Um, the, the actual cups itself, also not that much. Um, like when I look at like the, the visual that Tanya's had, um, and I can even tell you for when we buy certain things for like, um, the civic center for, uh, certain events and stuff. The, like utensils themselves, that is quite more like a, a bigger cost difference, um, where it's can be two, three, four times, just from like, obviously the plastic mass production that we end up having. Um, so there, it, it really just depends on which specific components. Like I know Cooper, Tina, one of the reasons why they spent a lot of time with their, um, ordinance was because they have a lot of, um, uh, ethnic, um, food establishments that really need specific type of to-go wares. Um, but they can't just use your traditional, you know, even old school, you know, styrofoam, they just can't because it's, you know, soup-based type of, um, you know, uh, type of a to-go type of a byproduct, uh, for the restaurant establishment. So, um, I mean, I even was just looking while we were talking, they actually have a special handout specific to just boba establishments. Um, so that's kind of, I'd be curious just to read it, um, in my spare time. Uh, like, that's just funny. They are very specific. So, um, it really is gonna just depend on kind of which ones it is, um, because I would say even for us, you know, my personal, um, you know, side, it was, there wasn't really much of a delta between certain of the to-gos. But then other ones, yeah, you are paying an increased rate. So it's just gonna depend on kind of individual business models, um, and what they need in order to actually fulfill essentially the to-go service.
Is that a reasonable time for the business to adopt? Okay. Sourcing them and, I mean, doesn't, yeah, it doesn't sound like, because I think a lot of the times we take home, right? Uh, we don't need utensils. I mean, we have utensil at home. Unless that, you know, you're on your way to somewhere.
Yeah, and the county of San Mateo has an extensive list of items list that is accessible to the public. I, I can share this real quick if you want to just get a visual, but, um, so this is something we would also create and, you know, have readily available on our website, um, with all the links. It's, it's pretty organized. Well, there's a, there's options, a lot of options.
And I will say, um, San Mateo did a great job of actually doing essentially like direct source for like the vendors, like specific, but again, anecdotally from working with vendors, when you own a restaurant, if you tell the, um, like, let's say Cisco, um, which is, you know, a vendor for food establishments. Um, and you tell them that your local ordinance requires you to have, you know, let's just say it's, you know, one of the sugarcane type or bamboo products, whatever, you know, let's how say how specific it is here. They will just say, okay, well, these are your three options for what you got. Um, so some of it isn't even necessarily that some of them have to kind of go down the rabbit hole and try to find its source at themselves. This thankfully does give it to them, you know, especially if it is a smaller mom and pop. Um, but even as we can see, you know, during weekly deliveries, um, there's some big vendors that are doing weekly drop-offs to our food establishments in downtown specifically.
Yeah, and one of our outreach efforts would, we were talking about potentially hosting, um, like a, uh, a fair or an expo for, and having some products and businesses can come and, and look at them.
So question on, uh, uh, customers bringing in their own, uh, utensils for takeout. I feel like there was a law against it at some point for hygiene reasons. Is there something? Are people allowed to do that at this point?
Yeah, I think it's, everything's back to normal. Yeah.
I just saw a Starbucks where you could like literally bring and then you just top it into your own. I was like, oh, that's brand new. I haven't seen that at mine one recently.
I just took my reusable boba cup to boba guys earlier and you, and they filled it up for me.
Something to encourage as well.
Yeah.
You can get him a repelling. There's a whole program for the coffee shops.
Yeah, so that I don't think is written in the ordinance is, but it's, um, I don't know if that's on a case-by-case basis for the business, but I think that COVID restriction or that advise, like, the, the advising they were doing on that is, is no longer, um, yeah, being done.
Yeah, I don't know how you would write it into an ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's more of a preference and encouragement of it during the education component.
So just to summarize, we're, wanna do, wanna go forward with both the to-go requirements and the dine-in. And, um, do we want to, I think I've kind of explored enough on the plastic lids and its preference based on the city. And so do we want to go with the, the plastic lids being allowed or do we want to offload this to the subcommittee?
Uh, uh, I would feel better off letting the, these kind of technical questions to the subcommittee because all I have is anecdotal, uh.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is there's not more research we can do. It's just a decision we need to make.
They're probably more educated to make that decision is, is my feeling. Uh, who, who's, who's on this?
After.
It's just, yeah.
I do this, I thought. Just so you.
That was pretty. That was the pretty.
That was pretty. So some things I guess would need to be answered for certain, like our PLA lined lids allowed or, you know, by our compost facilities.
I don't think we're gonna get a straight answer on that. So I think we just need to move forward with with what I said earlier of, you know, there's accepting kind of those challenges that there is with using compostable materials. Accepting kind of those challenges that there is with using compostable materials.
Yeah, find out if they will take it or not, or.
So, so I can answer it a little bit, yeah, it's, it's, so Tanya has done a. Tried to do as best of a job as we could possibly do, we're getting from the haulers one answer, and then we're getting. Conflicting answers from even some of our counterparts in the region that are using the same landfills. Some of them are saying that they're accepting it and doing something with it, some of them are saying that they're not, and it's just kind of just going into the landfill. So it's, we're not getting, unfortunately, this is kind of one of the very specific industries that kind of has a lot of. Legislative pull and they haven't really been held accountable yet, um, truly, even though a lot of the regulations are kind of coming. In line with what we would probably see happen later from the legislator.
So we would assume that they, they don't take except PLA line cups and.
I don't like to take it.
Yeah.
We don't really know what's happening.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's probably, that's our best guess essentially. So, we can kind of continue to talk to like our regional kind of partners and people just to see if anybody's getting more firm answers. But as of right now, we haven't had, um, a hard and fast, yes, this is what's happening.
Um, so your specific question is, do we wanna make exceptions for lids? And. Is that the guidance you're looking for right now?
Uh, yeah, I, cuz you, that was brought up earlier. I, I would not, but.
Just know. Can I ask you couple more questions?
Yes.
Do we want to strengthen the requirements with regards to condiments as well? Because right now in the ordinance that was passed last year, I think you have to request. The condiments, right, but it's just, anybody can have it as long as they ask for it, do we want to strengthen that? And make sure that condiments are not given into plastic bags, plastic sachets. That's one question, the second question is. Since we're doing a single-use plastic ordinance, um, I'm sure you've noticed that in some grocery stores still. Um, they provide plastic bags for groceries. Um, do we want to?
So to answer your first question, the ordinance would require. Reusables, uh, reusable for condiments at dine-in or bulk. Like a big ketchup bottle or something like that, um. And then for to-go, it would have to be compostables as well.
Okay, good.
Uh, that's what would be covered in the ordinance. For produce bags, um. I.
Bruno, were you asking about like the produce bags when you're, you know, buying? Or were you also talking about the ten cents like for the re, kind of reusable plastic, that's, I don't think.
No, no, I was, I was uh asking about the produce bags, actually, when you go to grocery store, you have. Uh, some give you the choice of paper or plastic, and I see a lot of people using plastic, I just would like. Uh, us to, you know, regulate that a bit better.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, um, if that's being regulated, um. With other agencies. But if that's something we want to look into.
I mean, I think, I think there is a clear alternative to plastic bags for produce, right? It's just using paper bags and some grocery stores actually gives you the, give you the option. It's just, I, you know, these plastic bags are not recycled, recycled, right? They end up in the landfill, they end up in the water, they end up everywhere, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I think we should, if, if, if it's possible to do it within this ordinance, I would include that in there.
Yeah, I think we'd have to check with legal on that because it's a disposable foodware ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, versus calling it a single-use plastics ordinance. Um, which I think only focuses on the to-go, I'm not sure, I, I'd, I'd have to check in with the, with legal on that. But I think most ordinances, um, from these agencies are called like foodware or disposable foodware regulations or. Something along those lines.
Yeah, so I don't know, but I'm just, uh, offering that as a potential additional option for the audience. And then, and then with regards to the plastic lids, I would just not allow plastic lids, I mean, there are options. Frankly, fiber options right now available, I don't think we should allow that, it should be excluded also. That's my, uh, suggestion.
My only question would be if, if people have experience that have used them. And if they tend to leave or tend to do whatever, don't hold up as well and. Just hypothetical scenario, enforce it and then there is an uptick in percentage of people. Getting burnt because they spilled their coffee on themselves, so maybe a little bit more research to just make sure that. There is, uh, it's reliable based on experience, I don't know. And if, if we're sure and if it's, if it's a given, it's just a matter of, you know, two cents versus three cents.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, I think I, 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 I agree, just limited to the food items, uh, doesn't. I, I think getting to the shopping bag, grocery shopping bag. You're gonna ask question all about, about you go to the store, I mean, right? Okay, so I think that's a much broader, that's a, you know, that's a separate thing, so. Let's just focus on the food related. Not to expand. I, I don't know about this legal issue, but I think, yeah, we should make all of them to be compostable material. I, I don't know if there's any complaint about compostable lid, doesn't work as well, I, I have no idea, so.
Okay. Um, I think, yeah, that's it. Those are all really good suggestions, um, and any, any other questions, clarifications? Okay, uh.
So, it's just, just one process question, is it coming back to the commission with a kind of a draft guideline?
Uh, I think, so that's kind of the summary, I, sorry, I didn't email this to you, Bruno, but there's a summary of the, of the draft guidelines. Um, and then I guess the next steps would be to draft up the ordinance. Um, and I, um, you know, get feedback from other stakeholders. And then, um, bring it back to the commission.
Okay. Cuz I, I think, I, I just don't know if we need to take a, a formal vote on this one, I know it's a discussion item, uh, so we don't have to. But I think there were a lot of, I mean, I, I don't think, but we're all in agreement in terms of what should be done. Or are we? I mean, I, I was hearing different voices, questions, should we do that, should we not do that, I, I just want to make sure we clear on. You know, in terms of what kind of directions we give to you. There was a plastic lid issue, uh, you know, probably the, the main issue was the plastic lid, I just. Don't know what the commissions wants to say or suggest.
Yeah, so I think I, I got enough direction, I think I'm gonna do a little more research on the lids and then. The city, I guess we will make the final decision on that. Um, anything else that we're not too sure of, we would make the final decision and then, um, the commission can weigh in. You know, um, after the, the other stakeholders, uh, weigh in and then get a final say, I think, then. Does that sound good?
So no, not, nothing to vote on tonight, uh, I'm just asking for input and, uh, you'll come back to us in the next couple meetings and. Finalize it, is that, or what's your time?
Yeah, I think hopefully the next meeting, um, if I can get, it depends on, you know, who else we're gonna have to review this. Um, either the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay, at which point we would hold a formal vote and.
Before it goes to council.
So to clarify, there is not gonna be formation of an ad-hoc subcommittee. And then more work on this one, this is gonna, you're gonna take it forward, it's gonna be. So, just to clarify.
Unless, you know, the, the commission feels like there needs to be an ad-hoc subcommittee and more research, but. I think we can move this forward.
I wanna ask you, so you've reached out to more stakeholders that include various group of restaurants, a diverse, diverse.
So, yeah, we would, you know, put out these requirements, we would have to do, um. Uh, community engagement and, um, just like we did with the reach codes and then allow. For the community and businesses to weigh in and, um, give their suggestions and comments and then, um. You know. I think last year, the hauler reviewed it and then. Um, but I'm not sure how we're gonna do that internally, um, but yeah, we would definitely need to do community engagement and outreach.
And they're saying you're gonna do a, a mass send out, or is there specific groups that you're saying we're concerned, you know, about whether they're gonna be able to comply and we're reaching out to them?
Um, we would be sending out, uh, letters, we're gonna be, we would be sending out something through. The Business Association, uh, newsletter, we would be, um, doing. Um, like a community workshop or meeting. Um, so those would be all the ways that we would be doing community outreach, yeah.
And there, there is, so like Redwood City, for example, they, um, when they passed their ordinance, um, and when it went into effect. Um, they're actually one of the last ones in San Mateo County that did theirs. They on their homepage actually have like a request for technical assistance. I don't want us to kind of naturally assume, oh, all hundred, you know, restaurateurs in town. They're not gonna know how to comply, we have a lot of intelligent individuals in restaurants, you know, owners that are gonna use their vendors accordingly. Um, but there might be a few that really do need kind of more some, you know, kind of. Handholding through the process to help understand and kind of, you know, make it as, um, you know, simplified for them as possible, so. We'll kind of do, you know, kind of a multi-prong where we kind of touch all the bases at first and then. Obviously, offer our services, you know, support, um, on an ongoing basis, um, you know, as needed.
So I guess coming back to the whether or not we expect an ad hoc, I'm just curious if, if it's. You need a guidance and the commi, the commission is giving you guidance and it's, uh, final. Or a pre-final ordinance is coming back to us. There seems to not be a whole lot of work left for the marble commission on this subject.
We're gonna need help with outreach and engagement, so that. If, that's what the subcommittee would do. And they could be there for, if I need any other guidance or wanna check in on something, like, it doesn't hurt, I don't think, but yeah, I think. Um, when we come, you know, we, we have a pretty, uh, flushed-out outreach plan, I think. And that would be, you know, the commission maybe helping, um, at the community meeting or. Checking in on some businesses if we need to, uh, which I think we're gonna need to, and, um. Uh, let's see. Yeah, there, there, I don't, I can't think of everything else.
So, bottom line, we're gonna need a, uh, an ad hoc subcommittee, do we wanna do it tonight, or do you wanna, or can we do it tonight? We have to do it next time, okay?
I think it sounds like we have to do after the.
But otherwise, it's, you've got a draft ordinance, you're cleaning it up still, but it's in pretty good shape to get us, back to us in the next one to two meetings.
Yeah, I think I have what I need to start the draft ordinance and then move forward with community outreach and all that stuff, so.
Good. Is that it? Thank you, Tanya, excellent, uh, the next item is a dark sky ordinance update. And I'll just do it verbally as opposed to presenting anything, uh, and. Make sure you keep me honest when I give this update. So over the last thirty days, a couple things, we've done, uh, a number of things, um. First, I've discussed very briefly with Nick on what the process would be to get this to the council. Uh, I think at the end of the day, it's the subcommittee's job to come up with a very, uh, with a very concise. Uh, and direct, uh, a concise directive to the staff, they will draft the ordinance. Uh, we'll come back in case they're here and then vote and get it off to the council. I think we can get that done by midsummer, it sounds realistic, um. So that's at least in terms of process, uh, the, the other point is, I think it'll be an ordinance, uh, with some building code, uh, changes. Uh, so it'll be a, uh, kind of a dual effort there across, uh, a couple of, of both planning and building code. Groups, um, in addition, we have continued to reach out to neighboring. Uh, communities to benchmark and understand their experiences, which includes, as we talked about last time. Brisbane, we've also talked to Portola Valley, Los Santos Hills, we're in discussions with. Uh, Sunnyvale, Cupertino, all of, who have some type of dark sky, like ordinance with bird safety. Um, we've reached out, we've begun and have reached out to some of the city stakeholders, including the fire, the police. We had a very good discussion with planning, uh, a very helpful discussion with planning. Uh, and we're still looking for a contact in maintenance, um. If you can get us out, but feedback from fire was very clearly, they're not that worried about this, uh. I think the police will be the same, they haven't gotten back to us, planning had some good input. Um. I've, we've started a draft of the ordinance, uh, and actually I was gonna share that tonight, but I don't think it's quite in shape. At this point, I think we need, need one more go-around before I waste your time. Uh, but I think, uh, by the next meeting or advance of the next meeting, I would send you out, uh, a link to our draft. Uh, kind of ordinance points, uh, and then we would like feedback at that point, I, I, I'm just not prepared to share that with everybody. It's a use, uh, good use of our time, but that will be coming shortly, um. And again, our goal is to get this done, uh, by midsummer, I think that's doable, so, that's my update. Uh, any additions, Commissioner?
No, I think your covers, um, Tom, do you wanna, since we have, you care. About, do we want to, uh, like have a overarching policy, is it an ordinance?
Yeah, so I, 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 yeah, I should have updated you, I did talk to Nick about that, I think it is a. Or an insane, it will impact building codes as well, so we'll, we'll cover both, both angles, yeah, yeah.
So, um, the conversation that I had with Sundayville, um. In their approach, they're, they're still working on, you know, focusing on new, new buildings. Uh, which were in crew, multi-family or commercial, residential. Uh, they're focusing on, yeah, nothing, they're gonna like mandate for existing ones. They don't think that, uh, they can enforce it, so, so their, their goal is to having all the new buildings. Complies and they want to implement that at a design specification review stage, just putting those requirement. Yeah, so that's kind of. They've already had bird safety, since they have the bay part with the city and, um. And some of the, uh, you know, dark sky one, especially, you know, I, I think it's a confined. Because of the, the bay, that, you know, the, the wild animal habitat, they, they have that special. Environment that, we, we don't. Yeah, we, we don't have like such a, yeah, we have the need, but it's just not as, uh. Pressing as they, 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 they were having before.
Yeah, the Bay Conservancy, um, definitely has pushed that in a different angle for quite some time because of the bay.
Okay, I think that's it.
Good, any, any questions or comments? I know I just gave a verbal, like just any. Good, okay. Next. Topic, uh, commissioner reports and comments.
Yeah, anything from the council meetings that are relevant to.
I had. Who were the assignments, was it one sixteen and one twenty-three? I know I was one twenty-three, just, did anybody take one sixteen? I think I had January nine, right?
They were January nine.
I think it was ninth, yeah, sorry. Yeah. Any, any? I can report on that one if you want, um. So the meeting, that meeting was, um, dedicated to the discussion of the goals for the council meeting and, um. Obviously, there were a lot of discussions, roughly, the goals that were set last year are pretty much the same goals for this year with some minor modifications. I wanted to, um. Highlight maybe a few comments that were made by some of the council members and I don't know exactly what the final goals look like, I think it was pretty. It was adopted by the council at the meeting, last meeting. Um, and I don't know if some of the things I'm going to mention were in, adopted in the goals. One of them was actually a, a suggestion from the mayor to. Add a sentence at the beginning of the goals which had to do with.
Add a sentence at the beginning of the goals, which had to do with equity sustainability and fiscal fiscal responsibility. Um. Kind of to highlight the values of the city uh, before stating the goals. I think community engagement must have been also part of that sentence. I don't know if it ended up making it to the final goals. Um. There was a few, and there were some comments also, and specifically one from the mayor again, um, affirming um. That all the plans including the cap were council policies. So that's also uh, something that I thought was. Uh, interesting to mention again. Um. There was um, you know, that we we're looking at parking management. I think there is a parking management plan that's. Uh, being um, put together right now by consultants. I'm not sure what the status of that is. But there was a comment from Vice Mayor Daly that um, if we do a downtown parking facility, we should have a park on top. Of the downtown parking facility. So I don't know if that's something the parking management plan is gonna be looking into. Um, and then there was another comment also from the Vice Mayor about the cap. Um, that we were looking at mitigation a lot, but we should start focusing on adaptation as well. So just something that to keep in mind as a, as a permission. Um, so that's pretty much what I had to say about that council meeting. Are are the goals published now, uh, Nick? You know, the final goals?
Yeah, so the goals um, were adopted um, at the meeting after the one that you attended. Um, and you kind of pretty much covered it um, at the high level for sure. Um, I'll just kind of go through the five just of what they are verbatim is. Um, number one is business communities. Um, number two is uh, circulation, safety and efficiency. Um, number three is environmental sustainability, um, which I'll kind of just read that really quick. The city of Los Altos will be a leader in the environmental sustainability through education incentives and adaptation and um, initiatives. Um, and practices identified in the gap. Um, number four is housing, um. As that's obviously kind of a big push right now, um, from the legal requirements. And then um, number five is uh, neighborhood safety and infrastructure. So those were the um, established priorities for two thousand twenty-four for the council.
Okay. Thank you, Bruno. Um, I think I have the next meeting, which I think was one twenty-three. Um, and I just took a few notes. Uh, uh, there were a few things discussed. The two primary ones was was. The library remodel subcommittee uh, presented their, I guess, goals and findings. Um, I didn't listen to that in detail to be quite frank, but um. I guess, I guess one, one thing we wanna keep on is make sure that the, if, when it is remodeled, it is a green remodel. I'm guessing it would be, but I don't uh. I don't know who's overseeing that and ensuring that that is done. Just a.
Yeah, so just high level, it's um, the the library commission. Um, working in tandem with NCLA, which is the North County Library Authority. Um, which is the parcel tax that everyone pays in Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. Um, kind of specifically talking about the funds that are available um, associated from the collection of that parcel tax. What can they actually achieve? It cannot achieve a new build of a building, um, as that falls incredibly short. Um, but it does have enough to make um, a substantial. Um, interior remodel essentially to the whole configuration and everything, um, potentially. Um, if they wanted to take it to that um, that level. Um, so then that. Will kind of advance with like the wave of the one, so to speak, to go to NCLA to then have a more robust in-depth discussion about if they. Really wanna move forward with using um, the NCLA funds towards um, that project. Um, so that's kind of what that project act actually is. Um, but yes, anything that were to be um. Uh, done associated with um, the remodel internally would all have to be all up to speed with today's title twenty-four and anything else that's in the building code. Um, requirements associated with that. Um, the only other thing that I'll at least tell the commission, just so that no one gets um. Uh, surprised is they will be putting a roof on though, um, the library, cause the uh, the county is um, contractually obligated to do so. So they will be doing that um, in the coming months, which is totally separate from what was discussed.
Uh, so that's, that was the library remodel. And then the other item, of course, was the tree ordinance. I believe it was the first reading of the updated. Uh, proposal. I think you're mostly familiar with this, but uh, they've increased the tree removal fees. Um, they've decreased the diameter of protected trees and native trees are now anything, uh, any native trees over ten inches you uh, are protected. Um. I think those were the main components, if I'm not mistaken. And the second reading, I think, is taking place and adoption will take place tomorrow.
That's what it is scheduled for, yes.
Yeah, so that is moving along.
Are there any public comments on that?
Uh, Bruno was there. He made, he made, I believe, Bruno, you made a public comment uh, with the, last week? Or two weeks ago?
Yeah, I made a comment actually with regards to, so I I I think there won't be any, part of the ordinance is that uh. A permit won't be required, um, if you have to cut down the tree. Because it's damaging a building or because it's taken down for safety reasons or because it's taking down because it's dead or because it's taking down because it's diseased. And the fees would be waived, they wouldn't be waived. They would be set at zero in this particular situation, which is not. What we had discussed as a commission. So I made a. Public comment with regards to that. I I think um, and the idea was that I think it would be nice to still have the permitting process. At least for diseased trees and dead trees, because I think um, you know, unless you have an arborist specifically for the a diseased tree. If you, if you don't have an arborist, tell you that this tree has to be cut down because there is no way you can treat it. I think it's very difficult to make a decision. Or just say, just cut the tree because someone says it's diseased. I think, I think it's a little bit of a. I think it's a little bit excessive, but um, so I made a comment about that. Um. Uh, and I think I made a comment about a couple of the things. Um, but you know, that that was the 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 main, the main part of the. The issue that I had with the ordinance, which was a little bit washed down frankly from what we as a commission uh, proposed. But um. Yeah, so that's pretty much what I had to say on that. But I think it's, it's moving forward. I think. It's gonna be a lot better than what we had and I think it's a good step forward.
And those were the main points uh, from the one twenty-three meeting.
Oh yeah, it's just a, sorry about that. Just another point is that in the the situation that I just mentioned, there was no requirement. There is no longer a requirement to replace the trees, the tree that was cut down by an equivalent tree or. Two or three trees, which also is a bit of a challenge. Cause we're cutting down trees, well, whatever, whatever happens, we're getting them down, we're not replacing them in that situation. So that's a bit of a challenge also.
Yeah, the other, um, I guess. Um, potential downside of that is, you know, if somebody really needs, wants to get rid of the tree, they could let it die. Uh, I mean, place to do that. Over a period of time, so it's kind of a little disappointing that that is. Sorry, I have to say that.
Okay, uh, next item. Staff updates.
Um, I don't have any updates.
Um, other than um, I do, so um. Tanya, you will start seeing her title will be formally um, changing from sustainability coordinator to management analyst level two. Still in the same capacity. Um, but uh, essentially a promotion of sorts as well as a redesignation. And kind of amplifying the authority and kind of the position that she um, holds and also the responsibilities of the position. Um, just so everyone knows, we actually did um, uh, with an outside consultant, a position audit of that position to make sure that it was. Properly structured as well as classified. Um, and that was the recommendation that was given. Um. That then also segues to is um, Ciamara, who is sitting to my right. Um, has actually worked um, for the city since um, October of twenty-two as a development services technician. Assigned to the planning division, um, because of her aptitude and kind of um, background and kind of basis of her education, which was. Also in environmental sciences. Um, myself as well as the deputy director are um. Reassigning um, her for essentially shared functions between planning as well as. Um, the environmental kind of needs and sustainability efforts that we're gonna be doing. Um, in order to be able to kind of help bring holistically together, kind of a lot of the planning processes that are inevitably um. Something that sustainability has. So with that is you're looking at the two individuals that will help implement and carry through the cap. Um, kind of what we've been doing um, over the last year or so. Um, and with that, I don't have anything else.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Sorry, I miss that. Welcome.
Congratulations, Tanya.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, next item, potential future agenda items.
Did anyone wanna add?
I have a, I have a couple, uh, if I may. Um, so. First one uh, is potentially having the reach codes packed on the agenda. And the reason why I'm saying that, because with the ninth district, the decision, you know, nothing is going to happen. Uh, for the next foreseeable future. And I think. As a commission, it behooves us to look into the reach codes again, to see if there is anything we can tweak around the reach codes to be able to move forward with something. Uh, right now, we're not allowing specific equipments in the reach codes. We're making, we 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 are. Having restrictions and that's, that's what the ninth uh, district court decision was about. And I think uh, there might be other ways to move forward with uh, guidelines uh, or strict regulation with regards to gas. Uh, which doesn't specifically talk about gas, but talk about something else around the environment was, whether it's. GSG emissions for equipment or whether it's um, the efficiency of the equipment. I I I think that's a discussion we need to have as a commission and I think that's something we should be looking into as a commission. Um, and maybe that's gonna be part of what the subcommittee will do on the electrification of buildings. But I I I wanted to suggest that as a potential agenda item, because otherwise, nothing is going, going to happen on the reach codes for quite a long time. And then every, every month, every year that passes that we don't do anything about new buildings, I think. We're not, we're not helping with our emissions. So that's one agenda item that I wanted to suggest. That we bring back to the, to the commission. And we can decide as a commission how we want to handle it afterwards. Um, the second one is about plastics again, and it's um, different from obviously the single-use plastic ordinance. But it would be an addition, it would be something that we can do. In addition to that, to limit plastic use or increase actually recycling of plastics in Los Altos. So. As a background, um, as you probably know, in the US right now, only about nine percent of plastics are being recycled. Recycled. Most plastics actually end up in landfill or they being incinerated, um. Which obviously is a big problem. It's a big problem from the, from the carbon standpoint, but it's, it's also a big safety problem. Because these plastics that go into the landfills and have been microplastics. Microplastics go in the water, it's, it's in the air we breathe and we ingesting a lot of microplastics as humans right now. Which potentially can have uh, health effects. Um, and there are some studies that have been done, obviously uh, in the lab. But also on some animal species that shows that uh, it interacts with the immune system. It can lead to cancers and and all sorts of other things. So I'd like to ask to take a look at plastics. Um, in general, and go beyond what we're doing right now and see if there is a way we can. Uh, increase the recycling of plastics. It's also part of the cap goal, as you remember, the cap, one of the cap goals is to increase the diversion rate. Uh, from eighty percent, about eighty percent today to ninety-five percent by two thousand thirty-five and ninety percent by two thousand thirty. And there is no way we're gonna be able to do that unless we start looking into things that we can recycle now with curbside pickup. So, the agenda item is uh, would be to uh, invite a company that actually specializes in recycling. Hard to recycle uh, garbage, including plastics, but it's also sterile foam, it's also um. Uh, shoes, clothes and all that kind of stuff. Um, that company is called Ridwell. You may have uh, heard of it, of them. It's a, it's a private company. Ridwell. It's a private company and actually they uh, work as an addition to the cops, curbside pickup that we have through Mission Trail, for example. Um, and they are very flexible in the way we can work with them. They can work with the city or they can work with individuals. Right now, they're looking at the individual route for Los Altos. But I think as a city, we could potentially do something with Ridwell. Uh, like we do with Mission Trail, which will be in addition to Mission Trail to allow us to increase our diversion rate and make sure that. Plastics in particular are being picked up to be recycled. They have a way of recycling plastics, partnership with different organizations that specialize in that. Um, so I I I would like to suggest that we invite Ridwell to uh, the commission for presentation. And then we'll see where we takes, where it takes us. I mean, it's now, obviously not in the work plan. Maybe it's gonna be in the work plan next year. If that's something that's of interest to us and we want to tackle. Um, but that's one uh, additional agenda item that I wanted to suggest.
Um, so uh, any comments before I make them? Um, so, so on the reach codes, uh, I I was also gonna suggest something on the reach codes to be on the agenda. Uh, but I think, I think there's two things. One, um, I think it'd be great to get an update from staff on how. What is the status of the current reach codes and how they're being enforced? Uh, I think would be wanting, so what, what, what is going on with the reach codes we've had? Were they impacted by? Uh, the legal issues, are those still okay? But then the, in terms of like, what can we do moving forward? I think that is. I I don't think it's useful for us to have a commission discussion, but that is exactly what the, uh, in my mind, the. Electrification sub, ad hoc subcommittee should be looking into. Um, so I think it's, it's really two things. I I do think we should get an update on reach codes from the staff, if if that works. But then the, the other part is really an ad hoc subcommittee. Uh, responsibility. I don't think it's an open discussion. I don't, I don't, I don't know what that will achieve. Makes sense? Okay, uh, on the plastics, uh. I'm personally hesitant to have somebody come in and pitch something when we don't really have a concept or a work plan that would. An item that would even uh. Uh, know what to do with it, right? It's, 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 again, I I I don't know. If we have a, if we have a plastics subcommittee that determines that that's something we need to do, then we could bring them into the, to the larger commission. Um, but I don't think it's necessarily productive to have them just come in and present uh, without us. Having an idea of how we would incorporate that. If we wanna ask the commission to go out and look at Ridwell. On their website and do their homework on their own time, that, and then come back and talk about it before we can do that. Um, that would be my suggestion. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels.
So I second the, what you said about the um, reach codes and that we, we should get uh, an update from staff. And then. Given the state that the reach courts are illegally, it makes sense to, to do, to look at other things we can do within electrification. That's also not necessarily reach code. I'm not, I'm. I'm actually open to, to receiving information from Ridwell, cause I I know, I think uh, my son's school also works with them and they, they. Recycle specific things that, you know, you just don't know what to do. So if there is an option for us to do more, that's. Doesn't, you know, take a lot of funds, it'd be good for us to hear about it. Um, and maybe there, that's, that's my opinion of that one. I also have a proposal for another. Uh, which we can discuss this.
Let's get these two locked down first and then we'll come back.
For Ridwell, they've been trying to engage with us for a while. Um, and it would cost additional funds to engage with them. So, um, and I think that's in the public, public works wheelhouse. Um, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but uh. I I I think the choice was not to engage with them at this time, so.
So the, yeah, so just, you know, the main issue is that we have a franchise agreement that um, fundamentally probably prohibits it without me looking at it. Um, and it is locked in for like another. Five years. Um, and so Mission Trails is, obviously, they would probably object to us meeting with another vendor. While we're kind of tied to a legal franchise agreement. While we're kind of tied to a legal franchise agreement.
Okay, that, that.
But it's in, in addition, I mean, they're not providing that service that Ridwell will provide, so it would be very different from that, would, that would be separate, I would, yes, it would be in addition to, right?
Commission, we can look at the franchise agreement and the city attorney can opine on if we legally are allowed to um, consult with them. I don't think we should get into further conversation about it until she weighs in on it, because that agreement's been standing for over five years.
Okay, so we'll look for guidance from you on what that outcome is.
Yeah, and just an additional thing is that, again, yeah, if we're adding work plan items. If, if that's going to be another task, so I don't want us to get fall back into what we were doing last year, and that would, that would be to me considered another work plan item. So, I'm not really sure how we move forward on these potential future agenda items with our work plan, or if it's supposed to relate to. Or if it, you know, should relate. No, um, the reach codes is, is just like an informational update, that makes sense, um, but. For, yeah, if it's something that's gonna cause an extra, it's basically another work plan item or projects, or something, I guess. Yeah, it's kind of hard to.
Well, I mean, I, I think it would be an informa- informational meeting, it's just for information for us, we don't have to do and act on anything. I mean, it's just, we don't have to do it, anything, do do anything this year.
Let's wait and see, let's see, wait and see if we can, if we're even allowed to meet with them in that. Yep. Other items?
Yeah, yeah, so I was gonna propose that, uh, as a commission, we, um, now that, hopefully tomorrow, we will have an updated. Production ordinance, and we discuss whether we would like to recommend to the council. Um, that Los Altos uh, try to become an Arbor City Foundation, Tree City.
Tree City USA.
Tree City USA.
This is a new one, I haven't heard of.
So, um. That, that's. Maybe draft a little note to council to say. Trying to come this year.
So, so it's a way to handle that, maybe for um, the vice chair to come up with that letter already prepared, presented to the uh, team, and then we vote to approve it. Or wordsmith it?
But don't we need to agree that it's something that I should bring?
I don't.
Yes, it's, yeah, yes, it needs to be added to a potential future agenda item so that we can agendize it.
Okay.
Yes, right. So we have the re, oh, another.
I have one, yeah, just one suggestion, not, not the tree, something else.
Okay.
Um, I want to ask everyone, um, since I have been the only one who have been following the Lehigh. Uh, query, uh, we are, you know, we know that there's no active cement making, but. You aggregate all that business still going on, and there's going to be an annual update meeting that, uh, the county supervisor. Is going to get updates from all monitoring agencies, these are state agencies or federal that are monitoring air, water. Dust, all that pollution, and, um, I sort of wanted to really get some idea. Uh, this all city, I mean, I, that was in the past, I got the impression our council supports. Uh, Jose Miedan's effort, and our city express our gratitude, and also to support. I mean, Cupertino have been very active, they actually have. Lawyer that are really, uh, keep all the legal issues in check. And really pushing for change, pushing for the cessation of, you know, of the, uh, their cement-making business. But we want to know, they are in our neighborhood, even though, uh, you know, it's not, you know, it's sort of in an area incorporated. So the, you know, the county is taking an active role, but I wanted to ask is that what is our position? Uh, as commission, uh, you know, what, what do you see that we, we can do? Or we should continue to do, and we know Joe is probably, uh, you know, I think he's reaching his full time. And we don't know, you know, if the next supervisor is going to be spending the same amount of the dedication time and staff. Support and all this, so, uh, and do we have plan, maybe collaborate with Cupertino City? Uh, you know, some of us leaving the south side, you know, we are like two miles from them. Uh, you know, certainly those air and gas and traffic pollution's going on, it's gonna take some years, so. I think the last thing we left off on the letter was.
Yeah.
Taking the letter to council so that they can. Um, send it to the new representative, but, so I think that was the, the game plan. Okay. Um, but if, uh, are, are you suggesting to move further, or? I'm just, well, I, I just want to ask, I feel that, um. A lot of times, I just, uh, report information that I learn, but we have a, as a commission together. Do we acknowledge it is something that we want to continue monitor? Or our city, recommend our city to collaborate with our, you know, Cupertino on some of the legal things? And we can have some pressure on the company, you know, I think the best thing is that. They can leave this area and just stop all the business, and then let a reclamation plan start. I think right now that's the push for all that, so do we, we as a city, do we wanted to? Contribute to that effort, or we're just. Getting information, I just wanted to ask that.
Um, well, I thi- I think it's a good question, I, I don't know the exact answer, I don't quite know how to incorporate that into our work plan as a, as a commission. To, to me, what would be required, um, somebody like you, who is the most uh, educated about is to come forward with a proposal on. Here's what I think the commission should do to support, um. The removal of the quarry or wherever you want to put it, or the oversight of, of the quarry.
I want to get some actually, uh, sense, is if our council feels there's a need. That, you know, or city, I think, some, something concretely needs to happen. Yeah, I think we're, yeah, starting to get into some of the details, and if this is something that the commission wants to further discuss. Then it could be a potential future agenda item again. Okay, so. If, if everyone agrees, but I, I mean, everyone, we technically should be voting on each of these items, and they should be getting a majority vote. But, um. Yeah, once anyone wants to.
Do we agree that should be on the agenda? Does anybody?
I'm just conflicted because we started the meeting saying we're gonna stick to what's in the work plan, and most of the stuff we're discussing.
But, but, but I, I think this is a little bit different, uh, only in the sense, what, what I would say is if it becomes an agenda item, uh, uh, then. Commissioner Lou would be uh, responsible for bringing a very clear problem that we were trying to solve when it's, when we talk about it. Um. I think, I think that's okay, it doesn't mean there's gonna be, I mean, at that point, we decide, is this something worthwhile moving forward? Is this something we want to back, or are we too busy doing other things, so, uh, and, and if it does come on, then something else probably has to come off. I think you're right, so, or else we have to complete something before we take on something of this magnitude.
Right, so kind of a way to think about it too, is that, that the council's blessing the um, work plan, which is like authorizing staff time to be put on it. So if the commission is wanting to bring something that's purely like for like what this commission's gonna essentially then. Write a letter, say, hey, like, council, you know, can we be a, you know, a tree city, or can we, you know, send this to, um, you know, supervisor Semidian's office, you know? Asking him to work, you know, closely with the next elected um, supervisor of District Five. Or to, hey, please don't forget about us when you probably get elected as senator next, um, you know, like, uh, please continue to do that, you know? That's fine, but that's not gonna be Tanya and Cio Mara, um, doing um, staff time. So I kind of want you guys to kind of keep that in mind, it, it's, it's really like, we can kind of just help like, yeah, we'll put it on an agenda, but. We're not gonna expend any staff time, which is kind of like what the council has to do, or if they don't have three, then staff doesn't get involved.
We talked about that a bunch ago, and looked at the handbook, and that, you know, commissioners could. Propose items or do things if they're working on it by themselves. So I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
I, I mean, I can at least say from, I was at the council meeting, that when they did talk about Lehigh and everything, I mean, there definitely is, I know, two for sure that have a. A support of making sure that we, you know, do our due diligence as a city and entity, um, in the county, um, you know, so I think you could. If the count, or if the commission supports having an item for you guys to discuss.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think, I think it's, it's fine to have a, my own personal thing, again, we, if we need to vote, we do, but my own personal thing, it's good, it's fine to have that one on the agenda. But again, when, when we bring it, let's have a very clear ask of what you think we should do, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Instead of just.
I think what I was thinking that we could do as a, as a city.
We, we can talk about it on, when we get to it, yeah.
So, I'm just, any, any additions, because I'll do, I'll, I'll say them all, and we'll all say yay or nay, and.
Yeah.
Any other additions? Okay, so we have breach codes as an informational item, an update from staff on, on what, what, uh, the next steps were after the Berkeley decision. Tree City USA, um, designation and the Lehigh plant uh, strategy. All in favor?
Yeah.
Yay? Anyone not? Okay, so those are the three um, potential agenda items.
I think that's it.
I guess you'll get back to us, uh, Nick and Tanya on the, whether we can talk to Ridwell or not.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, with that, uh, the meeting is adjourned, thank you Bruno for attending, I think you're in France.